Calendar year.
But we did both because of the fact that you're starting to move in. Some of these are part of the fiscal and then some of them. So we did calendar twenty five where you're recording.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to today's council work session. I think we referred to it as a quarterly study session. And we mentioned it last week, but the purpose of tonight's meeting is to give the council an opportunity to have additional check-ins and conversations amongst ourselves and with staff about events, or whether it's legislative priorities or things that we need to take action on or just have some ongoing communications about. And so with that in mind, we are called to order. The first item on tonight's agenda is the approval of the agenda, meaning with the one item under new business, looking at calendar of the fiscal year twenty twenty five. Calendar events, which includes everything from July first, twenty twenty four until June thirtieth, twenty twenty five. Is there a motion to approve the agenda? So moved by council member Dixon, is there a second? Seconded by council member McBride. Any edits or corrections to the agenda? Hearing now call for the vote, all in favor, let it be known by the saying goodbye. Any nays? The ayes have it. I know council member Blunt is logging in and will join virtually, as will council member Brown. So they'll be coming in momentarily. All right, so with that, we have in our packets documentation, which is a town council event information form. Did the staff want to walk us through that first? And the PowerPoint?
Yeah, so Mayor Council, what we've done today is just kind of put together some things that you could utilize in your toolbox of community events. One is the council information form. Ray did a beautiful town community events report for you, which he'll be happy to talk with you about and answer any questions you have about some of the current events and some of the things that are scheduled. And then the last one was just a PowerPoint for discussion, just as information. We just wanted to give you over information so that if you had any questions, we could be here to answer it. Just thinking of kind of everything that some of the notes said. But I kind of want to just turn it over to Ray and Regime to talk about if you want them to talk about the community events that are going to be happening. So, Mr. Jeffries, it's your show.
All right. Thank you, Town Administrator. This is the, first we'll go over the twenty twenty four remaining events, first starting with October. We have Glensburg data is coming up this Saturday, October twenty sixth, with the parade starting at ten a.m. and the festival from eleven a.m. to three p.m. And then in November, we have Veterans Day, which is November eleventh. The Glensburg Turkey Distribution, November twenty second. A new event this year called the Turkey Truck, which is November twenty seventh on Thanksgiving Day. And then in December, we have our annual Ulog, which is our, I believe, twenty third annual Ulog or twenty second after the fact. The Senior Holiday Gala on December eleventh. And on December thirteenth, we'll have our Holiday Meal Distribution. Actually, it's December seventh, not the thirteenth. Yep, December seventh.
Wait, I'm sorry, so the Ulog is December, Friday, December sixth? Fifth, so we're not doing it on a Friday this year?
Actually, it is supposed to be on Friday, that's the sixth?
Yes.
Okay, well, it's supposed to be the sixth.
And then the Senior Gala, we normally do it on that Thursday. Did you say the eleventh?
Yes.
December eleventh, okay.
I think what we can do is make sure that everybody gets invited, which will help to that kind of, I think we're still trying to pin, we were pinning down the community giveaways, food giveaways, which was something that we've been working on. So that's something that we've been working on, is trying to make sure that, and so we'll do that this way.
It's a correction, it is December twelfth, so some reason the dates got mixed up, but yeah, we'll correct that. But Ulog, December sixth, Senior Holiday Gala, December twelfth, and Holiday Meal Distribution is on December seventh. So, that's twenty twenty four, anyone have any questions for the remaining twenty twenty four events for the Town of Glensburg?
It's just like it was yesterday.
Right?
Yeah.
Right?
Yeah.
So I think it's a perfect setup, and thank you for the overview of the dates that take us through the end of the year, Mr. Jeffries. So I know we're trying to get a call set with Victory Grayson or VGC to talk through getting things together. We have a good template, and so working with them to help with the facilitation of purchasing the food, all of that, working with Now Foundation to help galvanize volunteers, not just students, but they do a good job of getting us the adult volunteers too. But what I can do to follow process is use this form and fill it out in its entirety in terms of what support would be needed from the staff. Because a big component is public safety and code enforcement, just helping us control the crowd and move the line through and so forth. And then, I think once we have a call with VGC and just kind of talk through everything, we'll have more information so I can get this to you. But moving forward, I know this is kind of tricky because November is here in two seconds, but generally speaking, what is it most helpful for the council to complete this? Have a conversation with the town administrator about here's what I'm looking to do, blah, 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 and to provide sufficient time for you to then meet with the leadership team and see, you know, what levels of support staff can give us.
So what we were trying to do is put the form together in some ways for us for an internal mechanism too. So like letting council know what we're going to be asking you in some ways versus you having to fill out all that information. Kind of a checklist for us to understand, and Ray, I think you can talk a little bit more about that. But I think, you know, we have a really good team now with both Regime and Ray. Regime has several years' experience doing more events, and really, I'd like to kind of engage her more with the council, with doing the events. Where, and then with the, especially with the food giveaways, I think what we really want to talk about is that the chief, and I'm glad the chief is here, he has several events during the holidays.
Right.
And trying to make sure that we're not duplicating those services. And I know that the council is very intent on like some of these things, and so I just want to make sure that we are, in some ways, that you also see what the chief is doing during that period of time, that we're not conflicting. I was trying to make sure that the, I know that we're going to chash the chief on the dates for the Thanksgiving, but making sure that we don't conflict for the Christmas dates.
Because I know that was.
That's what happened last year.
Yeah, chief, so do you have the date yet?
He does.
Shop with the cop?
Uh, yes.
It's on there.
Shop with the cop is December fourteenth.
Different day, yeah. But just, you know, just trying to make sure that we don't, that we don't do that. And I know that you do, we also do the Thanksgiving turkeys to the particular houses, the senior. November twenty second, so we just want to make sure, and that's the same day. I think that we have the major distribution, because I think we were waiting to that Saturday before.
We, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, chief, no, I'm sorry.
It's a long time.
So we normally start at ten o'clock, and we just go around to the different senior citizen homes. So we'll put out a schedule ahead of time.
Uh, shop with the cops.
Oh, shop with the cops, that's, that you start at nine. And then we move over to Walmart at ten.
Yeah.
So it's ten to two, right?
And that was December fourteenth, chief, you said? And then for the senior distribution, you said November twenty second?
Yes, November, that's the turkey giveaway for seniors, November twenty second. And then November twenty fifth is the outreach meals for the homes.
Okay, so we're having, I'm confused a little bit, sorry. November twenty second is the Glensburg Turkey Distribution, that's the one you're talking about or another one?
There are two.
So there's two, uh.
The senior is on the same day as this day?
Yeah.
Yeah, but they're totally separate. I mean, usually they're two separate groups, but that's, we usually.
I just wanted to verify that they're on the same day.
No, they're not, and thank you for asking that question. Yeah, because November twenty second is a Friday, so that the chief's activity is normally on a weekday when the majority of staff are here. But our town distribution will be Saturday, the twenty third, so thank you for asking, because it did sound like you were on the same day. Yeah.
I'm like, sorry.
Yeah, and then, so, Mr. Jeffries, the school is good with Saturday, November twenty third for the date, okay.
Okay.
Excellent. Because tell me if you all disagree, but I do feel like it has worked better being at the high school than when we did it here, just because we blow onto the town streets with the lineup of cars, so that has a traffic impact, both in the neighborhood and Edmiston. Whereas you can pull a lot of the traffic off in the school park, so it's less impact to the neighboring community.
Yeah, I agree. I agree. Yeah.
And the school's been very getting with also sourcing kids. And so we've been, we did reach out to Ms. B for some of the kids there, because she was able to get a hundred people.
I heard she was there and.
I know, that's the hard part, I get attached to the staff. They got another job.
I talked to the Republican Jones today, and she says she still might be kind of involved in it, so she might be there.
Can I ask a question, please?
Yes, ma'am.
I know we, I know we dealing with Thanksgiving, but would the seniors also, chief, be getting something for December?
So last year, we did the, we gave gift cards away, so we didn't have to do the turkeys again. So that will be something that the council will have to, definitely have to approve that again.
Okay.
Because you guys approved it during one of the meetings.
So are we going to still do that for Christmas as well?
I mean, we have money from ARPA, if you did do it, you could, because you have to use it for the end of the year, you could do that if you want to.
We could, I just, my question to the group would be, what's the best mechanism? Because I know we want to give out something to help, and so I just want to make sure that we're not contributing to waste, or, you know what I'm saying? I want to, is that the best way to do it, do you think?
I, I mean, the gift cards are always great, because they can get to choose what they want.
Okay.
And that's what, and I know people really believe that Thanksgiving is the bigger need, but it's actually Christmas, because everybody gives something off of Thanksgiving, I don't care what church, what community, everybody gives Thanksgiving, but only so many people give something off of Christmas, so. I just want to know, would that still take place as well?
Okay, so it sounds like we're in agreement to do that again this year.
So, the question that I have is, and council member Blunt, you can help me on this, do the same people that give for Thanksgiving also get a gift card for Christmas?
No, I don't do that here. I don't do that here, I don't, I mean, I don't do that here, because you want to make sure that somebody didn't get for Thanksgiving, you make sure they get something for the holidays, but you, you make that established at the beginning. Because I usually do, I do a box and they put their name in it and their apartment number, so when I take them all, I have a certain date to put them in there. Once I take them out, I know the needs for Thanksgiving or Christmas, and I don't say whether you're getting one for Thanksgiving or Christmas. I just let you know, when the need is there, it keeps on going, I never give it to the same person. And that's when greed do take place.
Yeah, that's good advice, thank you, council member Blunt. I think our challenge for the town, though, is some of the families we serve for Thanksgiving, we also serve for Christmas. We don't restrict if we help to have a nice, you know, Thanksgiving meal, we're not going to help you for Christmas. But I almost feel like if we're not doing it for the folks that come to pick up for the town gift card program for seniors, is it fair for us to say that we're going to restrict? I mean, if we, if we have people to sign up, and there's less people signing up than what we have to give for Christmas, it won't matter anyway. Say it's forty gift cards and we only get twenty.
Well, I thought, I think it's only twenty per build, twenty per building, I think. We did twenty or ten or fifteen, I'm not, I really don't know unless I pull my sheet back. That's the way I do it, do it here, because you have, you can't give it to the same people all the time, then you could get a bigger problem. I'm just talking about the senior homes, I'm not talking about the community.
Okay, chief, you had a comment?
So I'm just going to bring councilwoman Brown and Michelle up to speed. That's the reason we do the gift card, because we, it's less stress on staff, because we did the turkey giveaway, two of them, because we help out with the turkey giveaway at the school and for the seniors.
Yeah.
So we, it's less pulling staff together, we just let the apartment managers give us the list of names, so we just drop off.
I remember, that's what we did last year, that's the reason why we went to the cards, because it was a lot, that's, and you have the other Christmas. So councilwoman Brown has her hand up, I didn't want to forget her. Councilmember.
Thank you, hello, everyone, yeah, you know, and Mayor, you know, and I'm like, you know, in agreeing with them in terms of the challenges, you know, you have people who have a need in Thanksgiving, and you may have someone who needs it, they have a need during Christmas time as well. You know, so, so how do, how do you balance that? Because, you know, to say, oh, I gave you something on Thanksgiving, and I'm not going to give you anything on Christmas, because you guys are on Thanksgiving. Yeah, yeah, you know, so.
But I think we, yeah, it's a good point, but I think we solved it, or just understanding the process better, since it's the property managers are providing the names, I didn't realize that before, so that was on.
Oh, yes.
All right, I'm sorry, but it's good to know that the town is working with the managers to collect the names, and so we're out of it. Staff just dropped the cards off, and then the apartment managers are responsible for giving it to those, yes.
And then the other thing is that in the general town three hundred distribution, we do not restrict people from either one. So if people, we just collect the straight list. So if you're signed up, or if you show up day of and we are at the end of our, you know, day, so that is not restricted. And I don't think that that's part of the issue that the council wants to discuss, that that is not restricted. So we did have seniors who did also show up.
Right.
At the distribution as well, but we did not say, well, you don't know that. So I'm like, so you could technically get several turkeys or chicken out of some restaurants, so that's the other.
It is, because I won't say the name, but you know who I'm thinking of, came in the car with a couple of people from the building for the giveaway. And I have no way to know when chief and his team took turkeys out to a particular building, did that same group of seniors also?
Yeah, they, they have done that, and a couple of times I did catch them when I first did the distribution at the school, and when they, when I found that they were there, it was like seven residents, I did not serve them here at all, because I just think it's unfair. That's just me, though, it's just me, but there's a need out there, I just, I don't do it. And I have, I do have a system, so that's the only, I have a system. I don't know about Parkview or Newton Green, because I know the challenges they're having right now, who did you get even trust with that list? You know, so at the end of the day, you got to, but can I ask how many?
Do we think they're hoarding turkeys or something, or giving turkeys or something to other family members or something?
I wish I could see your face right now, because you said, can I ask how many? That wasn't very so, ma'am. But chief, how many do you do for November and December?
So we did twenty five per building for the turkey giveaway, and there'd be twenty cards. But if you guys want to make it twenty five, twenty five.
So seventy five total, correct, that's all we used, we did sixty, yeah, so I remember that we did, yeah, that we did like, we did sixty cards last year. Or we did seventy five, but it was fifty dollars, chief, like.
Fifty dollars.
Yeah, so would the council be okay just saying flat seventy five for Thanksgiving and seventy five for Christmas? That way it's just the same amount, even though it's different means of support?
That's a lot, you said seventy five turkeys?
No, 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 for the gift cards, so it'd be twenty five gift cards per building in December.
Oh, okay, got you.
Okay. Okay.
I'm smiling.
Okay, so twenty five per building. Okay, so that takes us through that, we have the form to use moving forward, which I think is helpful, so we can also be consistent. Because even from the standpoint, if I say, okay, here's what I'd like to do, and I'll manage it, but then don't think through all these elements, it forces me to think through all the elements that we'll realistically need at the outset. So, okay, so we're good there. Any questions, though, before we move on about the events we discussed, or any additional information we need to give you, chief? Or Michelle, or Mr. Jeffries, Swatson?
We went over twenty twenty four, but if you have any remaining questions from now until December of our remaining events?
Mayor, the only thing, the only thing I was going to ask is that maybe if we would go through, I'm sorry, councilmember, I didn't. So we just would go through January and February, because by the time we know it, we are going to get there. And I just wanted to kind of get a plan for, and then MLK is somewhat, and I'll let Mr. Jeffries kind of go through January and February, so, Mr. Jeffries, sorry.
Hang on one second before we move on, council member Dixon?
Yes, Ray, it was, I don't see the employees event that we had last year with the police officer.
Oh, yeah.
Like internal.
Internal.
So that's going to be December sixteenth.
Take our work, get there, we don't want to miss it, because y'all feed us.
So forth, fully signed, December eighteenth.
Okay.
Yeah, that's what, this year for.
You're talking about the busboys and poets?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
You're talking.
That way you're going?
Yeah.
Yes.
You're talking about Night with Santa?
The stage where you went on?
Okay.
Or chief, were you talking about a different party, different at your house?
That's what it was.
Chief is having a different party.
Chief, you can count me in that one.
Okay.
I can get my fish. Chief is having a party at his house on the sixteenth.
So I said correctly, this is the police explore.
Oh, okay.
That's the sixteen?
That's the sixteen.
It's a Monday.
Yeah, that's something small to.
And what time is that, in the evening at six?
Yeah, it's usually at six.
No, it wasn't the daytime.
No, no, this is different, this is for the police explore.
It tends to come during the daytime.
Six p.m.?
Hmm, yes.
And on the time, what time?
Twelve to two.
You should have a calendar appointment for that on your town email, did you get that?
Yeah.
If I like going up.
Yeah, it's not, but I like.
Got it.
Yeah, invite for that will go up soon.
Thank you, Ray.
Okay. And then just one question, because we have the ceremony at Veterans Day, I'm sorry, at Peace Cross on Veterans Day. Do we, it usually starts at eleven, but it may not be worth it or too close now, but do we want to host just like a coffee hour before that? With just like refreshments for any veterans that we want to thank for their service before we head over? Because for that, I can just pick up Dunkin' Donuts, do something here, and just have like a card from the town that.
What, we also, they're also doing their lunch, that's.
That's true.
We did the. Yes, we did give our two fifty, you know, wanted to do five hundred to start spending money, and he's never generous.
What?
I said two fifty, don't go crazy, don't go crazy, so, okay, so we're.
Did he say the five hundred?
No, we did the two fifty, because all she asked for was two hundred, and she actually only wanted a hundred and fifty, so we gave her the two fifty.
But councilmember Brown, you seen that, oh, sorry, go ahead.
Go ahead.
Oh, no, I was going to say, you've seen the lunch and how they try to cater it, I think two fifty is better, so they can up the quality that they offer.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely, and I think since it's for our veterans, I really think that two fifty is kind of a little, you know, little, little, not cheesy, but I think it could be a little bit more.
I got you, so I'll check in and see if she needs more, we can.
They're up the menu too.
That's not right.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Do you hear this conversation, I'm just going to give people money and then say, this is how I want you to spend it, you better buy some caviar and lobster.
You know, get it back to the table.
That's not right, that's not right. Okay, so I think you're right, for our veterans, five hundred, to have a nice lunch.
We will check in with them.
Okay, we're checking with, and also she sent me a.
Let me see, but we don't have to, I'm sorry, but we don't, we don't, we don't have to ask her, we can, we can just say, hey, look, we want you, we want the veterans to really have a nice lunch, and we want to give the five hundred.
Yeah, that's fine, we already sent her the first check, so we'll have to just send her, not let her know another check is coming, that's why we want to check in, to say another check is coming your way, so that's the only thing we will do, how about that?
The chief is very generous this year.
Chief, we're bound to call you Santa Claus.
Well, you know, Santa Claus is a veteran too.
So we really need a nice lunch.
I'm really looking forward for that Christmas program with those kids.
Yeah, okay, so that takes us through everything, and if you look in the event schedule, those dates are listed in there. So we've got, you know, the Veterans Day, all the things that we just discussed in here, the mail distribution. So before you know it, we'll blink and be saying Happy New Year.
I know.
So with that in mind, Mr. Jeffries, I'll turn it back over to you.
Yeah, so I just wanted to say for twenty twenty four, disregard those days, because I realized I put the twenty twenty five dates in twenty twenty four. With Ida and Clay's birthday, so that's why it's kind of mixed up like.
Put it on the fly first.
But all the correct days are in your emails, I send it through the, the, and like.
Well, no, MLK Day of Service is correct.
Oh, yeah, yeah, twenty twenty five is right, but the remaining twenty twenty four days has twenty twenty five days in there.
I'm sorry.
That's why Ulog was all, the Senior Gala was all.
I see what you mean, so this is going to be a time where we have to rethink this, so the inauguration is January twentieth, which is actually pretty ironic, a doctor's hands moment, you know, birthday, that we could be having another historic moment. So from that standpoint, the question is, would we want to do our Day of Service that Saturday instead? Or move it to the next weekend? Because with the inauguration, now that I think about it, there's going to be so many balls and receptions and things that we don't want to miss out on those opportunities if they're available.
Yeah, I just said, I just saw the inauguration, so do you want to do it early? Do you want to do it the, do you want to do it the eighteenth, Mayor, is that what you're talking about perhaps?
So that's going into the weekend, which is inauguration weekend, so the pattern, like, starting that Friday, so either the eleventh or after, like, on the twenty fifth.
Okay.
Either.
Maybe, so what we can do is we can, because don't you usually do that with the Friends of Quincy Run?
Yeah.
So do you mind asking Marion?
We check in, she.
Yeah, check in, because like, that's, we'll just check in with them and see what the dates, and give them the eleventh or the twenty fifth.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, so we'll check on those days.
Okay.
Those usually at the waterfront park, and we walk the Ana Cossack River Trail, just to clean up some, you know, vines and trees.
Can you also ask her if they want to do anything at Quincy Run? Because we haven't done that section in a few years, and that tributary leads up to the waterfront park. So sometime, even if we have to break into two groups to catch the bottles, like, over by where councilmember Brown is in Ward One, where the Littlefoot Bridge is, is the lot that goes in there, that ends up at the river.
Yeah, it's probably a good idea, we haven't done that for, I think it's a good one. Yeah, we just need the, we do need a stream day then for our, for our, for our participation. Stable Manor, and that's, that's just one of those events that we, it's always good to have. That's what we always use as a, we have been, as far as part of our Stable Manor, and also for our NPDS certification, we use that day as one of our cleanups, so it's actually important if we do one, and if it's just staff, that we have to do something then.
Hey, so Black History Month will be here before you know it, too.
Yeah, so I put a tentative date for Saturday, February eighth, and I put location to be determined and timeframe to be determined. So I know years past, we've done Black History Month, sometimes in here at Town Hall, sometimes at the community center, sometimes at the public playhouse, and even at the library last year, well, no, this year.
Right.
This year, so I guess it's really trying to figure out what. This year, so I guess it's really trying to figure out what we wanna do this year for Black History Month, because we've, we've done different kind of events and different themes. So just trying to figure that out, but soon, because February will be here.
Yeah.
I think eleven. I think eleven would be good for Black History Month, um, and advertising the library, because everybody's sitting in the other library, students, you know, parents. So they can always grab a line from the table.
Okay, so I, I was thinking, a different thought, not that it's the right thought, but just the library was beautiful, but it did limit the amount of people we could have at the event. And unlike doing it at the community center where we have the stage, we've got the tables, we've got the food set up, so we can do all the things that we like to incorporate in the program. We didn't have that capability. But it was still a beautiful venue, beautiful program. We just had to reimagine it.
Okay.
So.
I agree.
I've been thinking too, like about some themes and all that, I think. But just, if we're, if we can do like more of the traditional program, I think too, also we'll get more people at the, um, the community center. For whatever reason, we didn't have as many folks this year as we normally have at the Black History Month program. Like last year, you remember, it was packed at the community center. And people were even sitting in the overflow. Oh, I'm good, Chief, thank you.
I know.
But it wasn't the case this year, so.
I totally agree, community center, because we had a time limit as well.
That's right.
Yeah. I agree this time.
Of this time. You, you're my witness. This time, there will not be agreement next time. For the record. Councilmember Blunt and Councilmember Brown, any thoughts on the location?
No, I mean, that's fine. That's fine.
That's fine.
That's fine.
Okay, Councilmember McBride?
No, it's fine.
Okay.
It's fine.
So what day was that again, Mayor, again?
The. For February eighth, which I was gonna commend you for that, because normally we do the last Saturday, and we end up bumping against the other port towns events and other things. So if we get ours out of the way early, we're done.
Yeah, I don't typically in the past, I remember, I think twenty twenty-one and twenty twenty-two, we were, the reason why it happened late February is because I didn't know, after Christmas happened, like, okay, we gotta figure something for Black History Month.
Yep.
But now that we kind of have some time to actually plan it out, is, I think it's better to do it early.
I was gonna say, if we. That's what I'm telling them with they.
Okay.
Council, I have a suggestion.
Oh.
Do you remember that, um, I'm sorry, do you remember that, um, company, I think it was Councilmember Brown and, and myself and you, right? We went to the library, they were outside that van.
They're coming tomorrow.
We could get.
Yeah, they'll be there tomorrow.
That would be great for back.
No, it's, it's another, um, thing.
They were walking through the town and British Justice County, like, when they just started, where this was, where that, do you remember that?
We're also trying to get them for the December, too.
What's the name of that?
San Jose.
San Jose.
San Jose.
Through MPCC.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
But they'll be at the library tomorrow.
Yeah, don't you think they'll be grateful back history? They know about history in that, but.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
See, uh, I can request that same story about.
Yeah.
Um, they, yeah, they did a great job telling us some.
We were gonna request them for April, for the Boswick House thing, for them to do it there, because we haven't had them. And if they can't do February, I think you can ask them for February first, but if they can't, to ask them for April, because since we're gonna work with MPCC to try to get them to have it at that, uh, the date that we'd like to do the, um, the thing, too. So just in case, just to, just to, just so you know, that we were thinking about them for that, to try, try something specifically about Boswick and about the people that might have lived there, if there's any stories, too.
Okay. What's your suggestion?
Is there a theme for the Black History Month?
We haven't come up with one yet, so we'll have to brainstorm some ideas. So please send them over to Mr. Jeffrey, so we can start working through that. I have a couple.
But I, 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 I'm gonna move for, for one second. The mayor, I, I do need you to host the ma- mayor at the Holiday Gala.
You said mayor pro ten?
I, I, I'll be running around. I'll be running, I will be running around. And, um, I'm, I'm just asking, and also could, could De- Deja, I got, might be murdering your name, but I need you to.
Uh, but no, we can do that. We can do that.
And I need you to do the prayer, um, throughout.
Okay.
Oh, yeah.
Thank you.
Okay. Got us.
Okay.
All right, and then before we go to April, I did wanna ask, and Chief, I'm looking at you on this one. Lysia organized such a beautiful, um, event for Women's History Month last year. Oh, yeah.
Your style.
Yeah, and not this, it needs to be on her, I mean, we can't help with this, but do we want it, I feel like as a female council, we should celebrate Women's History Month.
I agree.
And not that we're making ourselves the focus, but just recognizing, you know, the contributions of women, um, to the nation's history and so forth, so we, I'm trying to think what's the lowest thing, like just doing a breakfast, and you have to serve some light stuff, you have like a thirty-minute program, and then people can mingle afterwards, and we're done? Kind of a thing, or an evening reception?
Mm-hmm.
Where we invite women in the community and their families to come out? Same thing, have some light refreshments, have a short program, and we're done.
Would the library be okay for that?
Oh, that's a good point.
Because if you're not using it for, would that be a good opportunity, because then people could come in? And they do have rooms that seat, I think they have a room that seats a hundred? There was one, a larger room.
Mm-hmm.
Or is there, is that the larger?
There's a, I think it's.
It's a little bit like eighty. I know that that one had like ninety or ninety, so that's.
Is that the one we were in?
The meeting room, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Because it has, it has the theater.
I think a nice, I think a nice brunch between the two, so in case someone has something to do that evening, but a brunch is always nice.
Okay, so like a Saturday morning kind of brunch?
Mm-hmm.
And if we do that, then I would probably try to get somebody to be, do like keynote remarks.
Oh, yes.
Do you think we here could help us with that?
I'm sure, because that was her, you know.
Yeah.
Her thought, her vision, so I'm sure.
Okay, because it was.
A great step.
Beautiful. Okay, so Lysia, Chief will let us know.
And Ray, I guess, Ray, Ray, because Ray, the two of them working together, sounds good.
Yeah. Okay, and as far as the dates?
That's what I'm looking at, that's what I'm looking at the calendar.
Yeah. Do we wanna aim for the beginning of the month again?
When is Easter? What? When is Easter?
Question.
Yeah, I'm looking.
Easter, yeah.
That's true.
The twenty eighth is Easter.
Of April?
Twenty first is.
Oh, April twenty.
Yeah, yeah, it's the lady. It's Sunday.
Yeah, because you have the East, Easter egg and all that with the police department and the kids, so you don't want them to really, those programs to clash.
Yeah, so this will be a month, like a month and two weeks before that, about a month before, um, if we did it early in March, you have, maybe not the first, but maybe March phase.
I was gonna say, maybe if you did it the first, we would then be guaranteed that nobody may, that we might be first in the, in the set.
Mm-hmm.
And get that out there. That way, if you did the first or the eighth, you could look at both days. Just and see if there's open, because maybe people, because I think the one thing is that you're right, you, you struggle with everyone else.
At their events, yeah. Does the first sound good for everybody? March first, this, um, Saturday of brunch? Say eight thirty to ten? Or nine to ten thirty? What sounds like more people would show up for it?
Yeah. But what is, what is, what is this brunch for?
Women's History Month.
We all wear purple or white, or lavender.
And March, March is Women's History Month.
Yes, because you know County Exec does that Women's History, oh, yeah, thing, the big event.
The big luncheon, yeah.
Yeah, so at least we wouldn't be conflicting with that, because that's usually toward the end of the month, and it's always on a Thursday.
Right.
So, Mayor?
Um.
Do you think this is the eighth work for everybody? The only reason I say that, because I'm looking at her twenty twenty-five calendar.
Uh-huh.
So she'll be, the first week, she'll be in, uh, away with the Police Explore at a conference.
Oh, okay.
But the eighth, she should be, she'll be involved.
But is that too close coming back, because if the event's happening that Saturday and she's out of town, she can't really, you know what I mean?
Well, we've gotten on it.
Well, they, they come back on Friday.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, they come back early Friday.
Okay, okay.
Yeah.
And then we'll be helping each other.
Yeah, we'll be, yeah, we'll be helping out. We got Cammy and Maria.
Okay. Perfect. All right, so six thirty to eight works for everybody?
Mm-hmm. Is that even, you mean AM?
What? Miss Blunt said, yes. No, not six thirty, okay.
Yeah.
So you guys want, you want to fund this out of both the police and out of the town?
The police.
No, I think it's still part of our.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, so you just want, so basically, just a co-op between all of them. Okay, just wanna make sure.
I said you gonna do it.
No, we can, it's. The police's money is the town's money. Don't act like it's free.
What do you guys prefer, eight thirty start or nine o'clock start?
Nine o'clock.
Nine o'clock.
Nine o'clock.
Not brunch time. That's not.
One thousand and eleven.
Yeah.
But I think it's a breakfast, that's breakfast.
Yeah.
We like waffles and cinnamon.
Yeah, we can do some other stuff.
Continental.
Yes.
Okay, so we will not call it a brunch, since Miss Watson has corrected us that brunch is not that early. So nine o'clock, Women's History Breakfast.
Breakfast.
Nine o'clock? Mm-hmm. Okay, and then we need to determine our location. If, so if we are doing a Women's History Month breakfast, that does mean, well, we won't be able to use the community center, because Taekwondo ramblers are in there Saturday mornings until like one.
I think that the library says at ten, they do start at ten, so he could do ten. Because they don't.
You can have food like that.
You can't do a nice breakfast.
So I'll figure it out.
But who's eating would be.
Because we didn't do it last time.
Okay, that's great. Okay, thank you. I'm like, I was trying to, I was trying to give you guys, I'm trying to give you guys later.
Trying to help them out.
Trying to help them out.
Okay, so we'll see.
I know.
Oh, a restaurant?
No.
We got big money, ma.
We got big money, you're gonna have to get sponsors. We have a, we have a whole other thing, if you all wanna start doing a sponsorship project. This is where you start looking at, you need sponsors.
Oh, is it?
Okay, so we're on to May, I'm looking at the clock, six eighteen, so are we doing mental health awareness next year, is the question?
I say yes.
Okay, and location?
And I'm thinking, because, um, the filmmaker, he's, uh, shoot, shooting his, um, this, his second, um, uh, mental wellness, um, film. So, and so I'm thinking, uh, using it, it's kind of using that same format at the Public Playhouse.
Not trying to be funny, but the quality was not great, so I'm hoping the film, um, so I'm hoping is better this time around, if he's doing a part two on it. Um, but definitely, like you said, if, if you, if you're showing the film, you're absolutely right, Public Playhouse is the best opportunity to make it so like, you know, come into the theater. Yeah.
Yeah.
Um, is the same week, the, the week that we have here, is that where we're gonna, we wanna target for Councilwoman Brown? So that we can start to, to deal with the Public Playhouse and ask for our waivers? We can do it now, then start getting that under, under contract.
Yeah, because I was thinking, uh, you know, kind of starting early to see what their availability, what their availability is, um. And so I guess it's gonna be kind of contingent upon their availability with, um.
Right, it's like, but do you want us to target the date that he has there, is that okay?
Mm-hmm.
Do you wanna target the date with, with that again?
Uh, Thursday, May ninth.
May ninth?
We can, yeah.
Okay, we'll target, we'll start with there and then, and let you know where they, what, what their availability is, so we can start, and see if they're even starting this early, but we can check in.
May ninth.
Okay, because my life's on Thursday, okay, let me see, um.
Is your.
Okay.
Do I need to teach you like a printed calendar, Ray?
What's going on?
Ray is getting a printed calendar for Christmas.
Well, Trina, do you think, do you think we'd be able to see, see the movie? I, I wasn't there last time, so I'm not really sure. But would we be able to see the, the movie or the thing that he's showing us to see how it would look, maybe?
But there, there was a pre-screening at the Town Hall, but we could also, uh, set up one, um, at the Public Playhouse, yeah. And I can't say, I can't, I can't say, no, I don't, no, I mean.
You wanna do it at Town Hall again, like last time?
I said, I said, we did a pre-screening at the Town Hall.
Yeah.
We did, yeah, we did do. Huh?
I like that when we did the pre-screening here.
You wanna just do it here, so that way you don't have to deal with trying to get another date with Public Playhouse, and when, you know, when they can accommodate it? To the pre-screening, not the actual thing, just.
Right, right.
Did it last time?
Yeah, yeah, we did it there at the Town Hall the last time, yeah, that would be fine, what you mean.
Right. All right, and then Monday, May twenty-sixth, we have Memorial Day, so, uh, I know Ms. Green will be working on that program, but National Police League Chief for May, uh, twenty twenty-five, do you know those dates?
Yes, it's, uh, May eleventh through to seventeen.
The police's stuff is off, next page over, too, and he's got those dates in there, too, for the police.
Oh, okay.
Sorry. Yeah, my chair, so that just in case, just so that, yeah, yeah, those are there, too. Sorry.
Thank you.
And then you have the Easter and Extravaganza, things like that. I just, I just wanted to go through January and February, because of the fact that I just wanted to get those dates and not March, just not knowing what the council wants to do something in March, with Women's History Month, that's really helpful.
Well. But Chief, I'm sorry, I'm gonna miss the banquet again next year.
Seventeen.
Yeah. But, um. Okay. So I think we hit a good chunk of them, just let me see. Oh, I know my fix, March twenty-nine, Citizens Police Academy starts April first. Extravaganza, April nineteenth, which is the Saturday before Easter. Mental health, body rodeo on the third. Okay, and then the Citizen Police Academy graduation, June tenth.
That's a good program. To start, oh, wow.
And then, I know it's, oh, okay, got it on here, the car show, all right, we don't have to go that far. I think we just wanted to get a head start. Two, one, does everybody feel like they got their questions addressed? Or are there any other questions we need to cover before we move out of the event?
No, just real quick, I wanna ask Ray, um, when do you need to write up for the uh next uh quarterly newsletter?
Um, let's see.
It's soon.
Yeah, soon.
It's soon, it's like, I think it's the next, you need it probably soon.
Ray, can I make a suggestion?
So I would probably say by November. November eighth. So that's about two weeks. If sooner, that, that would be great, but.
Okay.
I'll, I'll send you all an email.
Okay. Okay, by November eighth. All right, um, and then just wanna make sure too, it doesn't look like there's any duplication with the dates. I know sometimes we've had that issue in the past where Chief, we're bumping up against your community dates. But are you comfortable with what's laid out on the town event schedule? Okay.
Okay.
All right, any other questions before we adjourn? Thank you staff for putting everything together and playing it out, helping us get ahead on our planning. Uh, okay, so with that, is there a motion to adjourn tonight's uh quarterly study session? So moved by Councilmember McBride, is there a second? So seconded by Councilmember Dixon, any comments or questions before we adjourn? During nine o'clock for the vote, all in favor, let it be known by the saying of I, uh, anyways. The eyes have been, thank you so much, Mayor John. We'll give you a bathroom break before we go into the closed session.
Oh wait, that's still recording.